The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
Next, I would ask Celestine to read the mission statement.
Thank you Brenda. "We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world."
Thank you Celestine. Next, we will move to our open forum. And I do have some people that wish to speak before the board tonight. I'm going to call them in the order that these were received. Dan Gage. And you know this Dan, but for everyone else who's going to speak up, please state your name and your address and keep your remarks two, three minutes or less if you could, please.
My name is Dan Gage and I'm a teacher at West High School. I'm also a Green Bay City taxpayer. Address is 1326 Wolverine Trail. I'm speaking against the change in language in the employee handbook regarding transfers or the application to transfer. My understanding is that the board wants to go to language that will severely restrict the opportunity for movement within the Green Bay schools. And I wanted to just share quickly the perspective that I had when I was coming into this district. In 1996, I was teaching in the Manitowoc School District. And I learned of some opportunity in Green Bay. And one of the most attractive things that I saw in Green Bay was that there was opportunity to move, you know, to a different position, to a different school. I saw that as an advantage because in my time in Manitowoc, that really wasn't, there wasn't really that opportunity. And, you know, so you were in effect kind of locked into that job for your career. There's a number of reasons I think that it's important that we continue to offer the opportunity for teachers to move to other positions. I think, number one, I think it is important because it is something that is attractive to candidates looking for teaching positions. I think it's also important because it allows flexibility. It allows a teacher after 10 or 15 years, or three, whatever it might be, to have a change of scenery, to go to a different grade to teach, to teach a different set of classes, to be in a different building. And I really think that this new policy would severely limit that. I guess I would also, and this is to me the most important thing. If you are a teacher, imagine that you're a teacher in a very challenging, high-poverty school within our district. And you get into your career three, or four, or five, or more years, and you realize that you won't be able to transfer or be considered for another position, I shouldn't say be considered, but your opportunity for movement is extremely restricted. Why would that teacher stay in the Green Bay School District? If they are looking to move to another school and they're not able to do that, the question would be, would we rather lose that teacher to a neighboring school district? Or would we rather have that talented, experienced teacher move to a different building in the district? I think it's an important benefit. I think from what I've heard about the restrictions, I think that in effect, it will make it easier for administrators to fill positions because they will only have to worry about the one position. However, I think that what is going to happen is you are going to be filling more positions because people will leave the district for this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you Dan. Next, we have, there's Paris Hemel.
Good evening. I'm Paris Hemel, 1121 South Webster Avenue, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54301. I'm also the chairperson for our food service unit. I also have concerns over the language for the handbook. Over the last couple of years, we've had many challenges during the hiring process, some of which questioned us, made us question the language in the handbook and suggested changes. Eliminating internal interviews as the first chance and also the five-day trial period will not streamline the process. We have been working with HR a lot because the handbook currently as it follows is not, has not been followed. Certain employees, even subs, have been awarded positions without internal candidates knowing about the openings or even being able to apply. We've had open positions just given to employees simply because they're already there doing another position. And we also had a position given to a sub that has only subbed in the district for three months over someone that has worked for the district for 10 years, doing the same job but at another school. Eliminating the top five internal candidates within the unit, or if none within the unit, within the district, not subs, you're taking away what little protection we have. Employees want to move up, they want to better themselves. Our long-term employees have a lot to offer: knowledge of the district, the policies, its goals, and technology, personal connection with other staff, past training, all of which would lead to less training for a new position. It's very discouraging for us to hear over and over again from HR how moving current employees to new positions is a great backfill. Waiting for the five-day trial, the new language will speed up the process by letting subs and outside applicants apply at the same time. That's happening now as it is. We've had internal employees, top five, that have been overlooked for interviews. We were told that this will help eliminate that from happening, but as I read the language, it states to me that this could be a possibility and it gives them permission to do so. Many times, the five-day trial has been waived by the employees. In one case, we had a food service worker that moved into a para unit, decided that it really wasn't what she wanted, she moved back to her previous position. She's very happy. Wouldn't you rather have an employee that's happy in their position? If they're not happy, their job performance fails. And also by having HR decide where they should go, that could affect a lot of people's benefits and pay. One thing to consider, that under our old contracts, job postings were supposed to be posted within five days of a vacancy. We now have jobs that remain open without posting for weeks, if not months, in all departments. After they finally are, employees apply within five days. Employees are also waiting weeks for interviews, and even more weeks after that to find out if they were awarded the position or not. We feel that maybe addressing some of those issues may help the hiring delays instead of taking away some of the advantages that our current employees have. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I also made copies for all the board members.
Thank you Paris. Next, I'll call Karen Stibbs. And board members have received a copy of Karen's attached remarks.
My name is Karen Stibbs. I live at 2690 Regina Street in Green Bay, 54301. I'm also an officer of the AFSMI 3055 Union that represents the maintenance, clerical, monitors, food service, and noon hour supervisors. In response to the proposal made by the Board of Education to change handbook language pertaining to hiring practices in the Green Bay area public schools, we would like to submit the following discussion points for consideration to the Board of Education. The AFSMI units are not supportive of the district's proposals for the following reasons. We have been told numerous times that filling vacancies and job positions is taking way too long, and thus, one of the reasons for this proposal. We have seen many instances in the AFSMI units over the past few years where positions were not filled in a reasonable time because of the following reasons. The jobs were not posted within the five days after the vacancy occurred. It sometimes took weeks and even months. Interviews were not held in a timely manner after the posting deadlines closed. Again, sometimes took weeks and months. Applicants who applied and interviewed were not notified of the results of their application. Applicants were not sent for their five-day trial in a timely manner. Again, taking sometimes weeks and months. Therefore, we believe that if the handbook procedure is followed as written, jobs could be posted and filled in a timely manner with efficiency. And all of these provisions once existed in our union contracts. We are adamant and steadfast that internal candidates be considered first before outside applicants when filling vacancies. Internal candidates should be considered by seniority first as stated in the employee handbook. An internal candidate can offer knowledge of the district's policies, procedures, use of technology, and don't require a background check. And the overall learning curve for training will be greatly reduced. With a timely five-day trial, an internal candidate would have time to acquaint themselves with the staff and job duties to make a successful transition. Currently, there have been several instances of internal candidates that have been overlooked when filling vacancies, and some of these applicants were just making a lateral move. Jobs were filled with subs over regular employees or with outside candidates that were hand-selected by interview teams. With site-based manage interviews held at the building locations, who will monitor that current employees are getting first consideration? If this practice of filling vacancies continues, there is and will continue to be a breakdown in employee morale and a feeling of hopelessness for promotion. Hiring subs over internal candidates has happened at several locations. The positions subs are working in have been vacant for such a long period of time that the subs have had ample opportunity to familiarize themselves with the staff, the procedures, and the specific job duties. Therefore, when considering qualifications, the subs have been hired over an internal regular employee. This too has contributed to deterioration of employee morale. There is not a one-size-fits-all process for filling job vacancies for exempt and non-exempt employees since AFSMI employees can retire at any time in the calendar year. Filling vacancies over the summer for 10-month positions does take longer, and we understand this. But clearly, it is not the fault of the employee. We welcome the opportunity to work with the district to help mainstream the process for filling job vacancies and hope that the district will continue to maintain transparency when revising employee handbook language. And also at this time, in light of this agenda item tonight, we would be requesting the reinstatement of the Labor Management Committee meetings. We feel that will maintain transparency between the Board of Education and its employees. The meetings existed at one time and kind of just ceased to exist for some reason. We're not really sure why, so we're making a request to reinstate that. We are hoping that your decision tonight, at the very least, would be to table the vote on this language change until all the considerations and concerns that are brought forth tonight be considered and discussed. And one more thing that's not on the sheet that I think is noteworthy to mention. Fifteen of our maintenance employees have, or I should say our AFSMI leadership for the maintenance have taken it upon themselves to organize a boiler class with the area AFL-CIO units for our maintenance workers. And it's costing our maintenance workers over $500 per person to take this, to be certified in boiler operations. So that's just one, just as one example of how our internal employees are invested in working for the district. And this will be taking place in January. This was created and generated right by our own AFSMI workers. And I think that's just a wonderful thing that they have put together. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Karen. Next is Tracy Rabus.
My name is Tracy Rabus. I live at 242 Michelle Court in Green Bay, 54302. I'm currently serving as a president of the Para Professional Association, and I would like to thank you for allowing me a chance to speak this evening. I believe this is a very sensitive topic with two very clear-cut sides who are both equally as passionate about their chosen side. On one side, HR is saying that 50% of a principal's evaluations are based on the performance of the school. Therefore, they should be allowed to choose whomever they would like to hire, whether that person be an internal candidate or an external candidate. The best person for the job is the person who should get it. On the other side, you have the employees who are saying, "We are your most valuable resources. You should look to us first before searching externally." As you can see, it's a very sensitive dilemma. A few comments that I would like to make about the proposal is, I appreciate that when it comes to layoffs, it's the least senior person in the building, and that you've chosen to recognize seniority that way. And also in terms of in fall, the most popular time in which people who are displaced are searching for work, that preference is given to them. So thank you for that. I would, I very much agree with at the last meeting, Mr. Becker's statement regarding that what it would do to staff morale if we don't look at the minimum, the most senior person to make sure they receive an interview. I agree. It would devastate morale if the person with the most seniority isn't given at minimum an interview or consideration. Imagine this. An employee searches on WECAN or sees a posting, fills out the application on WECAN mid-September. Then they wait, and they wait, and they wait. Finally, in November, they get a call for an interview, only to find out they are an internal candidate that that interview is the very next day during school hours. Very difficult. The employee is torn between, "What do I do? I can't just leave my kids at school hanging, but I really am interested in this position." So they work it out to attend the interview. And then they wait, and they wait, and they wait, only to find out that the person, that they weren't chosen. An external candidate was chosen instead, who in fact just began work a week ago. The position was posted in September. It really makes a person question their value as an employee when first of all, they have to wait that long. And second of all, they didn't get the job, even though they are an amazing worker. I know this person personally, and I've worked with her. Dr. Langenfeld said at the last board meeting, "If we're doing our job right, people should be able to go into an interview and knock it out of the box part, as they have insider info. If we do this well, and we do it right, we should be able to keep every employee we have, and they should be far ahead of every candidate with no experience. We need to put the very best in front of our kids." This is very much true. Our kids deserve the best. As Dr. Wegener said, "Interviewing is an art." And if our employees haven't, have been employed within the district for a length of time, which is fantastic. History says longevity in a position is, can only do great things for the kids. However, if that person decides that maybe they need something else, whether it's because they used to work with kiddos who have special needs, and maybe their bodies just can't handle all of the lifting and the transferring, so maybe they need a different job. They're not being granted the interview. It's really devastating for morale. And they may, and they may get the interview. However, interviewing is an art. If a person's been employed with the district for 15 to 20 years, they haven't been interviewing, they've been perfectly happy with their job. Therefore, interviewing, resume writing, it's all brand-new to them. Sure, they can go in and they can tell about their great experiences, but they don't have the current knowledge of interviewing and resume writing. I urge you to reconsider this proposal and give all internal employees in each bargaining unit an interview rather than searching for external candidates. The best candidates can be found. You've already hired them. Thank you.
Thank you Tracy. Next is, I have Brian Mills.
Hi, my name is Brian Mills. I live at 3464 Golf Drive. While I'm an employee of the Green Bay School District, I'm here as a parent. I have one child that goes to one school here and one that will be starting shortly. And I have concerns also with the policy change and how it'll impact the schools with where my children go. This policy seems to have no advantage to district employees in taking into consideration the amount of training that takes place with them. Previously in Green Bay, when we bought our house in Green Bay, we looked at how this district handled employees compared to other school districts. And while I had some inside information, being an employee of the district, I also followed the information on it. It seemed like the employees are very happy here. And I just have, I know that the board can't answer questions for us. You need to get the information, but I encourage you to think about the following things. How many internal candidates have been turned down for positions within the school district? Also, if there's been any concrete reasons given for those. What defines a hard-to-fill position? And if that person leaves, isn't that position still hard to fill? What financial gain does the district get from this policy change compared to a decrease in the morale of the employees? How much training and experience do you lose if veterans' teachers leave to area districts? How significant is employee turnover in Green Bay? Looking at the board minutes, it seems like there's some resignations as well now that are going on, that people may be going to other districts. And then also, how many staff members have left and remained in the profession? And this doesn't just deal with teachers. This deals with the secretarial staff or the AFSMI employees at the front desk. They're the faces of the building. But most importantly, I want to know, how does this benefit the students of our district? It seems like it just increased, it hurts morale of the employees, and it doesn't provide any true benefit for the students within our district. So thank you.
Thank you Brian. And lastly, I have Brad Reister.
Brad Reister, 1029 Marquette Avenue, Green Bay, 54304. I am also an employee of the district and the Curd's Green Bay Education Association Vice President. First of all, I'd like to thank Paris, and Karen, and Tracy for their comments. I think they were very well put together and gave a lot of information that this board could take. I also want to echo Karen's statement that GBA would like to be recognized as saying that this issue should probably be tabled tonight so that further information can be brought forth from all of the units involved. We do have a process through our handbook team where some of our GBA representatives had some information put forth, but it was not the same timeline that we have had when we've had employee handbook changes in the past. Which it was one meeting where something of this magnitude that affects this many employees within the district probably would have been given maybe two meetings, three meetings, depending on, you know, the magnitude of it. And I believe this is a pretty high-magnitude policy change or handbook change. But the piece that I really want to talk about today that I went through as I was reading was how this affects how we are going to apply for positions within the district. If you take out all of the language that talks about an internal email notification process for internal employees to use an electronic application form that you can just put in your resume and cover letter, and it forces instead the individuals to go to WECAN and go through that process, what holds back the employee from looking elsewhere? If you are now directing that to WECAN, which is a statewide system or a system used by many districts, why wouldn't they look at all positions posted and not just the positions within Green Bay? And to me, that scares me a little bit. It scares me that an opportunity that someone like myself, who has never considered leaving this district. I love Green Bay. I grew up in Green Bay. I went to schools in Green Bay. I teach at my old high school. I love it here. I would never consider moving anyplace else. But I do have a dream job, and it's not where I currently sit. I would love to be teaching eighth-grade algebra. Those opportunities don't come around that often. But I am not seeking out to move to another district to gain that opportunity. If I would have to go to WECAN to apply to an internal position, and I see another eighth-grade position that offers the same job specifications that the one inside Green Bay does, why wouldn't I submit to both places? That worries me for where our district could end up, that we could lose a lot more highly-qualified, highly-trained-by-our district teachers and other personnel to surrounding school districts and beyond. So I really want you to consider these changes. Really look, look at them, and I really would encourage you to table these and hear from some of our units in more detail. Thank you.
All right, thank you Brad. That's all the forms I have filled out today, but is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board?
Thank you for asking, Madam President. I really appreciate that. I'm David Harswick. I live at 808 Glenhaven Lane here in Green Bay, 54301. I also serve as the Executive Director of the Green Bay Education Association. In reviewing the policy changes, there are number of different aspects to them. Some of them have been mentioned already. One that has not been mentioned is the backfilling of people who may be leaving hard-to-fill positions. As a quick example, we had an individual this year who was offered a position in July but was not given the official word until the middle, end of August. And this person was going to be having to prep for three different classes and a completely different program. And yet, this individual was in limbo for six to seven weeks. That individual is a very good teacher, and it was a very frustrating situation for that person. I would also say that one's years of service should matter. The years of training that people go through should matter. And this district provides a number of resources. Millions of dollars worth of professional learning for its staff. IB, Avid, literacy training. I can go on and on. And the people behind me are hopefully shaking their heads up and down because they live it, they do it. They're lifelong learners. We believe these people should be given a preference. When we talk to members about this, they're very discouraged to hear that they now have to potentially compete with external candidates. And yes, seniority is a factor that people talk about. But the bottom line is bigger than seniority. People want to feel valued. And in moving towards this change, that's probably the number-one thing I've heard in the last two weeks. I don't feel valued if this change is made. And if you don't believe me, I humbly ask you to talk to the folks sitting behind us. Reach out to people in the schools and talk to them about this. This is a huge change for folks. In the midst of Act 10, which has created a free-agent system, and I know you're well aware of it. You're in bidding wars for tech ed teachers, bilingual teachers, special education, et cetera. My concern is that changing this policy and not allowing preference for internal candidates promotes this free-agent environment that Act 10 has created. So I ask for your deliberation tonight. I ask you to ask our members. I ask you to ask our members questions, and I ask you to think deeply about what the other speakers have said as well. And I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the roll call.
Check, raise. Here.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Almone.
Here.
Becker.
I don't know. I don't have my phone.
Cheng.
Here.
I'll cut mine, too.
Here.
All right, we have six board members present. I'm also joined at the table by Orange City Student Council President, Lokeen Cheng, and Mitch McMahon from Southwest. And to my left is Dr. Langenfeld and Sandy Heller, our Board Secretary. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the following minutes: regular board meeting on November 17th, special board meetings, closed sessions on November 17th and December 1st.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those meetings have been approved, or the minutes have been approved. We have no communications on file. And next is our monitoring reports, and that will be facilitated by Celesteen Jeffries.
Actually, I would like to make a motion to take the agenda out of order, since the handbook issue is, that's the number, the item you just called is number seven, and the handbook issue is 13B to A1. To move that up, I think, you know, perhaps Andrew would like to get here. So maybe what we'll do is to do the monitoring reports, item seven, and then after that, take us. I'll text him to see if he's coming. I don't know if he's coming. Well, I will find. I'll let you know as soon as I know. Okay. I think, I think it would be good if we did the handbook, item 13A, blah, 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 after item seven. That way it gives him 20 minutes more to get here.
All right, why don't we?
But we have 20, we've got, you're, yeah, we've got a lot of stuff before we get to that. So, then I'll find out if he's even coming.
Okay. Why don't we do monitoring reports and we'll?
And then we'll revisit after that. All righty. Monitoring reports it is. Mr. Smith comes to the board table. And he's joined by Steve Miller and Mike Free. Just to reiterate, it's been a while since I've been here, I've had some training, had illness, but Mike and I have been working with Mark to really present, I think, a lot of the issues and programs that we're working on in the district, and we're taking some of the bigger ones first. And ACT obviously is those very big issues. So we're going to get lots of great education so that we can move forward when we are doing the school monitoring reports in the spring and summer, because we will have lots and lots of background knowledge.
All right, good evening. This month's learning report, as Board Member Jeffries mentioned, is around the ACT test suite. So as a matter of context, the Department of Public Instruction is entering into a partnership with ACT and has created a system to comprehensively assess Wisconsin high school students. This is new learning for us this year, so all of our high school students will be assessed through the ACT test suite. Our ninth-grade students will take the ACT ASPIRE, and that's the early high school assessment in the fall and the spring this year. Our 10th-grade students will take the ACT ASPIRE Early High School Assessment in the Spring. And then our 11th-grade students will take the ACT Plus Writing and the ACT Work Keys Assessment in the Spring. Taking the lead on tonight's presentation is Stephen Miller, the Director of Assessment. Both Mike Free, the Director of Teaching and Learning for Secondary Schools, and myself will be available for questions after the presentation, but Stephen has the most intimate knowledge of this and has been working with our buildings to get our buildings ready for that ACT test suite. So I'll turn it over to Stephen at this point.
Thanks, Mark. So, as Mark mentioned, we will be using the ACT test suite at our high schools. We began testing this past fall with our ninth graders using the ACT ASPIRE Assessment. And all freshmen and sophomores will take the ACT ASPIRE in the Spring. All juniors will take the ACT and the ACT Work Keys in the Spring as well. It is important to note that the ACT assessments are based on ACT's college and career readiness standards. This differs slightly from the Common Core. There is a lot of crossover in the language, but there is also, there are also some differences. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about the minutia and the differences of those. I just think it's important that you understand that when we talk about the Badger Exam, the Badger Exam is connected to the Common Core State Standards, and the ACT Assessment Suite is connected to a different set of standards. Again, lots of crossover, but that set of standards is the college and career readiness So a little about the ACT ASPIRE. The ACT ASPIRE has, was developed to replace the existing Explore and Plan Assessments that ACT used. That's important to know because the Plan and the Explore Assessments were aligned to the ACT so that they could be predictive of success on the ACT Assessment. ACT partnered with Pearson. Pearson's a large educational company, as you are probably well aware of, and Pearson provided the delivery platform or the online environment where students would take the ACT ASPIRE Assessment. If you are interested at some point in time, and again, trying to keep this brief, but if you are interested, there is a site you can go to, tn.actaspire.org, and you can use those usernames and passwords if you'd like to see what a sample ACT ASPIRE Assessment looks like. Moving on to the ACT, I thought it would be important to include specific examples of the ACT, again, because both the ACT ASPIRE and the ACT Work Keys offer questions in a similar format and fashion based on those college and career readiness standards. This is a sample English passage. I see a couple of our students over on this site kind of smiling, probably familiar with the test and the format, where you're introduced to a passage, and then you are expected to try to correct the grammar in that passage. That's pretty common in the English portion of the ACT test. ACT Math Test. Questions can range anywhere from questions that might ask students to do division, multiplication, addition, to questions where students may have to plug numbers into expressions and solve those expressions, given some values, in this case for X and Y. ACT Reading. The ACT test itself usually features three passages and then questions related to those three passages to assess students' ability to comprehend what they're reading. ACT Science does take that comprehension a step further, introduces some scientific terms. In this case, they're asking students to read a passage, get the viewpoints of two different scientists, and compare those viewpoints to each other. And the ACT Writing, I included this site. Again, you can see example assays, since our students, all of our juniors will be taking the ACT Plus Writing. I felt like it was important to include at least a slide that provided you with a sample or some samples of what exemplary writing looks like and how ACT would score those writing samples. It is important to note as well what we're doing to help prepare our students to be successful in Green Bay on the ACT Assessment. We have purchased a product from ACT called ACT Online Prep. We have licenses available for all of our students to access this tool. It does allow students to take practice tests as well as diagnostic tests, and also get some customized instructional pathways based on their performance on those diagnostic or practice tests. The third and final assessment that we'll talk about in the ACT Suite is the ACT Work Keys Assessment. The ACT Work Keys Assessment features three 45-minute assessments. One of those assessments is the Applied Mathematics Assessment. The second is Reading for Information, and the third is Locating Information. Based on student performance on this assessment, students can earn a National Career Readiness Certificate, and they have varying levels based on the scores those students earn, from bronze, which means they've earned at least a three in each of those categories, all the way up to platinum, meaning they've earned a six in all of those categories. Little bit more about the Applied Mathematics Test. There are five levels of difficulty. The lowest level is three, the highest level is seven. The levels do build on each other, so if you explore a little bit more about the Work Keys, you'll find that the skills that are required on a Level Three are also required on a Level Seven, they just add additional skill levels. In the Reading for Information portion, the scores range from a three all the way up to a seven. The levels do build on each other, each incorporating the skills assessed in the preceding levels. The reading materials at a Level Three are very short and direct. They might be asked, students might be asked to read a couple sentences and then respond to those. Whereas at a Level Seven, there can be entire passages or parts of employee handbooks that students are required to read. The last part of the Work Keys Test is the Locating Information Test. This one actually only has four levels of difficulty, three being the lowest, six being the highest or most complex. The levels, again, do build on each other, so skills required at Level Three will also be required at a Level Six. At a Level Three, exam needs look for information in simple graphics. So a Level Three example would be looking at a pressure gauge and being asked to read a pressure gauge and what the air pressure is on that gauge, whereas a Level Six might include longer passages of material or complex graphics that students are asked to analyze.
Stephen, can I ask a question, as long as we're on the different levels here? What if a student has some extreme difficulty with Level Three? What happens?
So if a student can't achieve a Level Three, that's a great question. I'll have to get back to you on that, because the Work Keys Assessment is so new to all of us, and we continue to learn more information. I don't know if it goes zero to three, or if it would go below three. I'm not sure.
Would there be a different set of Level Three questions that maybe the students is more adept at?
Yeah, I'm not sure how much they're going to allow us to adapt the assessment at this time.
Because I assume we would have some students that still have trouble with the basic level.
Right. I guess the only thing I can tell you is new information becomes available daily on the state assessment system, and in January, we're supposed to find out more about state accommodations with the ACT Suite, both the ACT Plus Writing and the ACT Work Keys Assessment.
So, and I don't, I don't know if this is what you're looking at, Mike, but on smarter balance because of the technology aspect of it, based upon how a student responds, it differentiates the next question? Was that what you were asking? Or was it just, if they, if they don't get it, then what's the next?
Yeah, if they just don't get it.
If they're not, what would be the level?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
The great question. So, that's one we'll have to follow up.
All right, good, because I think that's important.
Yes, absolutely.
So is the test online, like this?
No. Both the ACT Plus Writing and the ACT Work Keys are not online. The ACT ASPIRE Assessment is a computerized test, so it is delivered online.
But it's not, what's that word you?
Computer adaptive.
Yeah, it's not computer adaptive.
The ACT ASPIRE is not computer adaptive, so the questions do not get more complex as students get them correct or less complex as they get them wrong. But it is a computerized assessment, meaning the students do take it on the computer.
And these assessments are in different languages? Or they're just in English?
English.
So what happens to our students who are not proficient in English?
That was the question that we asked DPI in the fall when we were told we needed to administer it to all of our freshmen, and at that time, we were told that they're still in the development process, and they're working to come up with either word-to-word dictionaries for our English language learners or some other types of accommodations, but we didn't have those.
You would have thought that they would have addressed that by now.
The ACT.
You know, I mean, that's a pretty basic issue.
Yeah, the ACT doesn't, my understanding is ACT doesn't do that.
No.
Yes, these are not like state assessments.
Right.
This is a college board.
Yeah. The ACT assessments themselves actually operate under a different set of rules than what we would typically operate under the schools. We would operate under IDEA. ACT operates under ADA, which is, it does not allow us to give a lot of accommodations to students. They make no accommodations for English language learners on the ACT, but...
What about handicapping conditions?
That's ADA.
ADA, yeah. The Americans with Disabilities Act would cover many of the handicapping conditions, but, and again, our buildings have been phenomenal in going through this process. One of the things that they had to do was actually apply for accommodations to ACT. Now, the testing isn't until March 3rd, but our buildings had to have all of those accommodations submitted in November. So when you think about the logistics of doing that, it just did a phenomenal job of looking at student IEPs, and again, operating under a different set of rules, because we typically operated under IDEA in the schools, but we have to adapt to ACT's ADA. All of that being said, there will be an additional tier of accommodations that we will be able to provide for students, both our English language learners and our students with disabilities, that the state will allow us to give. A student would not be able to use that score for college admission, but it would count for accountability purposes, now that it's a state assessment. But we don't have all of the details about that, and DPI has not given us those at this time.
Quite frankly, we're uncertain as to how the ACT test suite will be applied to the accountability process.
Process, yeah. We still don't have answers to that. We have asked. It's not that we haven't asked, it's just DPI has consistently said they're working on it.
I have a question about the Work Keys.
Yes.
So that's a new one. So is this mandatory? I'm not sure how this fits into...
We are required to administer the Work Keys Assessment to all of our juniors on March 4th with the makeup date of March 18th.
And so let me ask you this. So what is this by a student? The ACT is for the students.
Yep.
Regardless of how DPI instructs us, how we are going to use it for our own accountability, that is something a student takes with her.
Right.
But the Work Keys, if the students go to college, what is the point of Work Keys?
So, what ACT would tell you, and I can pair that for you, is students who attain the certain levels can earn that National Career Readiness Certificate, which could be brought in with them to an interview to demonstrate certain confidences, could, if it was embraced in the area, be used to help give students a foot in the door, saying they have certain levels of understanding in each of these areas. Obviously, it would take some work on our part to educate employers.
Right.
About what that means. Absolutely. Again, I can only tell you, it's meant to represent that career readiness component of the state assessment system, with that idea that it's, the questions are really very career-focused.
But how, in your estimation from looking at this, how duplicative? I mean, if a student scores a 28 on the ACT, what is the point of Work Keys?
So in my, in my understanding of it and working with our current technical education folks and folks at technical college level, they've expressed some frank, I don't know, excitement, joy, but interest in the types of content addressed in the Work Keys exam. For instance, our agri-science folks saw some samples where it was, you know, understanding a soil sampling chart. So the application in a certain career field as opposed to with the ACT, a reading passage may be more around the humanities, less maybe actually applicable in a job environment. And so that is, I think, where we're guessing differentiation in terms of how you're applying...
The job that doesn't require a college degree.
Or in terms of the technical application of content knowledge. So that's kind of what is being looked at. So I think for the first time, we're really seeing a, I think, one potential strength of this, and this is, you know, I guess my bias for teaching and learning department would be a real applicability in our current technical education areas, that this aspect to assessment, it supports career readiness across content areas. So it's potentially a strength.
And then how, because the NWCC has the AccuPlacer, so how does... So how does work keys stack, I mean, I know this is new, and if you can answer the question, I'd be happy if you'd just get back to me. How does work key stack up against AccuPlacer?
I don't have that answer at this time. I don't know. It's something we could follow up on.
Yeah, I'm curious.
Yeah.
In terms of the format of the test or how it would be used or what are you?
The content.
Yeah, how they compare.
How they compare.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, if you score well on work keys, are you likely to score well on the AccuPlacer?
Is it predictive of success on the AccuPlacer? The one thing getting back to when you talked about the ACT and ACT work keys kind of being duplicative, we can predict with reasonable certainty, if a student gets X score on ACT, they will likely get X score on the ACT work keys assessment. But as Mike pointed out, what that doesn't always tell us is, what's a student's actual ability to take some general knowledge and ability to put together an equation maybe and actually apply that to a real world type situation? Or, yes?
I was just gonna say, AccuPlacer measures reading, math, and writing, correct? So, you know, I think that it would be more the nexus of the ACT to AccuPlacer that we, you know, as opposed to work keys.
We, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, the other thing to note is too, that NWTC would take an ACT score as well for admission rather than the AccuPlacer. If a student had a qualifying ACT score, then that would eliminate the need for them to take the AccuPlacer.
We can get a comparison.
I would like to know.
And I believe they're doing that at NWTC, they're actually looking at a different...
Well, and it would make sense, knowing that the state accountability system has changed and students now will be required to take the ACT as juniors. You know, does the AccuPlacer then become just a secondary test that students would take? Some of the things I'm sure NWTC is looking into. And then finally, I'll close, I included some samples, or at least the link to the samples for the work keys items, should you choose to look at them. If you're curious, the soil sample question is the level six locating information question. If you'd like to track them, that was kind of fun, but I liked that one because it kind of was a triangle and you had to put it together, but yeah, it was cool.
So in summary, although the ACT test suite is new from a state assessment system, obviously our students have performed well on the ACT, those that have elected to take the ACT. We're excited to see more opportunity for our students to take the ACT. The logistics of the ACT is a new learning experience for us, making sure that we have prepared the buildings and properly worked with DPI and also ACT to make sure that we're set up for the testing. And that's been a large responsibility with Stephen and the administrators at those buildings. So it's an opportunity to say thank you to Stephen for leading that. It's certainly a big adventure and he is by himself oftentimes working to build that capacity in the building. So it's a good opportunity to say thank you for that. So at this point, we'd be more than happy to entertain any questions that the Board of Education would have.
Any other questions, Chris?
Two, if I may, just share with us again, what's, what sort of involvement is there for staff administering these exams? And two, are these exams going to be in lieu of other exams? And if so, what's the net loss or gain in terms of teaching time?
It's a good question. I don't have the exact numbers of, I guess, lost time in front of me. I would say this year, what we haven't administered are the English Language Arts portions of the WKCE for our 10th graders and the math portion of the WKCE for our 10th graders. And, you know, we added the math and ELA or English Language Arts portions of the Aspire for 9th grade didn't have testing at the 9th grade levels. Those freshmen will be assessed within the fall and the spring. And we did ask our teachers to be, they call them test supervisors. So we asked our teachers to be test supervisors at that point in time and provided training for them to be test supervisors. We did that in the fall, we'll do that again in the spring. We will most likely, we're working out the final details of this obviously, but when we administer the ACT and the ACT work keys assessments on March 3rd and 4th, we would be asking our staff to function as test administrators then as well. And that's obviously testing a different grade than we've tested in the past because we have not administered state mandated testing to our juniors in the past. So this is our first year of doing that as well.
And unfortunately, there's more testing required and less instructional opportunities for our staff. And that's, that's the reality unfortunately, so we're trying to, you know, just from a sequencing standpoint, trying to help teachers, you know, understand how do they, how do they, you know, address curriculum concerns and really focus on those essential learning targets so that our students are as best prepared as possible in not just sort of ACT, but for life after high school.
I would appreciate when you have a chance to find out what their net gain or loss in teaching time is compared to the past.
Sure.
I think our public needs to know that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, sorry. No, I forgot my question. Are we no longer doing the plan and explore tests then?
That is correct. We are not doing the plan and explore tests this year, which we had done as a district test in the past.
And that was eighth and 10th or ninth and 10th?
We did it with ninth and 10th. We did the explore in our 9th grade and the plan test with our 10th grade, and those were replaced by the new ACT Aspire Assessment.
Okay. And is it the same length test?
Same content. I would have to double check on the times because I just, I don't want to misspeak.
Okay, that'll be wrapped up in his questions.
Thank you for helping clarify my question. I guess what I'm asking for is just not a verbal response, something in writing saying this test was given, it's no longer given, this is given.
Yep. We can do that.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, thanks so much. And next month, PALS assessment will set us up then.
And the next one after that, I believe, is conversation around response to intervention. And then at that session, we'll also have an opportunity to engage in conversation around the details of the school monitoring report. So I updated, I believe, the board updates about that and I'll continue to keep the board informed. But we would need to be able to have a good conversation around what those individual school monitoring reports would look like.
And PALS stands for?
PALS, right.
Phonological Awareness Literacy Screen.
You know how I feel about academics.
There you go. Thank you. Keep me accountable.
All righties.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think this would be a good time to move up 13A blah blah. What is that? Let me look at it again. Go down, get it. Do I make a motion to move?
We have to, go ahead, to move the item.
We order the agenda, yes. And that would be item 13B to A1 and to take that item up now.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or ready to vote? All right, Sandy.
Hi.
Warren.
Hi.
Francis.
Hi.
Leica.
Hi.
Leica.
Hi.
Carried 6-0. So we will move to all those numbers. That will call up, I guess, Jean, coming to the table? Anyone else?
Yeah, I think we have some others joining as well.
Okay, oh, Randy.
Randy, and I like Margaret Kim as well. And I think it's the approach, could I say a few? Yes, all right. As we had conversations about the change in the handbook language, I think it's, there were a lot of questions that we had in our discussion. And many of you who spoke this evening spoke very eloquently, and I think we have the same concerns. One of the things that came out in our current selection process, we asked the question, does our current selection process actually ensure that we're competitive in the market? We are in a different age and time than we've ever been before, and that has put us in a very different place in terms of the free market versus, versus what was in the past. We asked, does our current selection process acknowledge that we have exceptional teachers and staff at all levels? Not just the five most senior, but at all levels, does our current practice do that? Does our current selection process and timeline preclude us from selecting from a robust pool? Does our current selection process ensure that we have a diverse applicant pool reflective of broad experiences, of diverse backgrounds in other students? And does our current selection process ensure that we have the very best in front of each and every student each day? I think our goal ultimately is to ensure that and acknowledge the fact that we do have extraordinary teachers, we do have extraordinary staff at each and every level. But we also know that our neighbors are very competitive with us and that we may not be in the marketplace quickly enough because of timelines. And we also are not necessarily garnering a pool that is reflective of our students at all in terms of diversity. So those are some things that we've had some pretty tough conversations about. So I'm gonna ask Jean and the team to provide some more feedback this morning.
Actually, Jean, I think this actually is an operation support work session or meeting, so I'm gonna turn it over to Chris. And then we also need to move the motion before we have the conversation.
The recommendation is that the proposed changes in the employee handbook related to employment as presented be approved.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Langenfeld, for your comments. Our administrative team is requesting that you adopt the new employee handbook language related to employment. We have people from our administrative team here to answer questions that you might have because they have personal experience and through their principals and personally themselves related to how the employment process has been working. So if you have questions, they can help answer them. We feel that there is a very compelling reason to do, to change the employment language. And we're recommending the changes because we, as Dr. Langenfeld said, we want to attract the very best candidates.
Jean, excuse me, could you speak into the mic a little bit?
I've got a kind of a different voice tonight.
Right.
When you go on vacation, we are not able to consider external candidates in a timely manner as do other districts. We're not posting jobs when other districts aren't doing so. Consequently, we know that we are behind the labor market and missing out on the top candidates and minority candidates. In serving the districts in our area and across the state, I could find no other districts that use an employment process as we do. None. I feel that every position is important, and as we consider these changes, I ask that we consider that all positions be posted both internally and externally, not just educator positions. All our employees are valued. And our goal in human resources as well as in all of the leadership roles that we have in administration is to balance both the needs of the district and the needs of our employees. It's not surprising that our unions would speak out in favor of the employees who they represent. But as an administrative team, we also want to speak out in favor of our students and make sure that they have the very best teacher in the classroom. And to do that, we have to empower our administrators, our principals, department leads to be able to consider the broader pool of candidates, which they are not currently able to do. We will be able to respect our employees, I believe, and value their work. I do not believe that this will cause us to lose employees to other districts because other districts are looking both internally and externally at the same time. I also feel that any, that the employment process is a work in progress, and we will be working on the new process, the details of how this will be rolled out with our unions. But to delay the process would not change the fact that we do have differences of opinions as to how this would be done. We've thought through this very carefully as an administrative team, and we do ask that you support the changes as recommended.
You're in charge.
I personally appreciate what administration is doing to try to speed up the process. We do have difficulties that way. We have for years, some changes remain in the past, which definitely help with that, but you know, from what I see, more changes need to, need to be made. I have to admit, when we talked about this before, I kept thinking just about teachers and not about the other units, so I didn't have questions in my mind about how that affected other units and perhaps shame on me. But, I mean, from what I've seen, I've heard many things brought up tonight, and they may have or may not have been addressed by administration. I don't know sitting here right now. So I guess I would like to see a little bit more time before we move ahead with this. And I don't think another month or two is gonna make a difference in our hiring practice. So I recommend putting motion on table to table this to January or February. And I put it or because of the short month here with the holidays. So we could get a couple more answers to the questions that were brought up and concerns that were brought up. And that's no guarantee it's gonna change, I certainly understand that. But I need to have a little better feeling that some of those questions have been addressed, that our concerns have been addressed. So again, my motion is on the table is to January or February.
Second. Go ahead.
Okay, I would try, I guess, the first thing to do is like to ask staff to respond to that and whether a delay of a month or two would create a problem.
I think a delay of a month would not, but I think if we delay till February, we are now pushing up against the time when we're gonna start to, we are gonna need to roll out the details of the change of the employment process. We will, you know, we will still continue to post the jobs in the other units as we do and, you know, try to, you know, follow handbook language. But I think February would be, would be creating concerns because we wouldn't have time to communicate.
Okay, I guess then if a month is not a problem, I would be willing to support that, but I would not support moving it to February. But I did have just a couple overall impressions, and I know some of the staff members who spoke tonight talked about how this benefits students. And I guess that's what I, as a board member, have to look at, is do our current hiring practices best benefit students? And, I mean, things in this state in particular have changed rapidly in the last couple of years, labor market changes. We are really in a, in a free agency market that we weren't in before, whether that's good or bad, that's, that's a fact. And we have a growingly diverse student body. And I think the need is to better diversify our staff. And if by change in this allows us to become more nimble in responding to that, I think that's something we need to consider. So, I mean, that's, in the end, when we vote in January, that is gonna be my bottom line, is that how does our hiring practices best serve students? So that will be my bottom line when we vote in January.
Point of clarification to your comment about February. Warren, you're sort of took the administration, whether they're gonna come back in January or February based upon their...
I guess I would prefer that you take the February out in your motion, but...
It's on the table, it's been seconded.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I think that is very interesting because staff members coming forward today, I think, expressed some of the same concerns that the administration has expressed, and that is the timeliness of filling positions and posting positions. Although it seems to me, from what I understand, the narrative, the explanation of that timeline is very different from the staff's point of view and the administration's point of view. What, I appreciate what the administration is trying to do, especially in terms of creating a more diverse workforce that better reflects our student body. What, what concerns me though is that for three years, we've been talking about, in a very pronomeral way, about what our workforce is supposed to look like, how are we supposed to hire, how do we educate them, how do we promote them, how do we, especially, you know, like we have the dean and training position for principals because that is an area of concern. And a month is not enough time, I think, to, to effectuate what I'm about to say. But I really would... But I really would like to see some more philosophy and meat and strategic direction around our hiring before we make a handbook change. And, you know, like I said, I recognize that that is quite a lot of work to do, and I think that the fact that we have, we've been talking about it, but we haven't been able to really get into it, I think speaks to the difficulty of such a task. But I feel that in an environment such as the one we currently live in and will continue to live in at least for the next four years, I think that it really behooves us to have a kind of strategic direction when it comes to our hiring practices. So that's another month. Maybe in that time, I can learn some more from the administration's point of view. And, you know, it'd be, I would like to see where we fall. Maybe it is even just a plan of how we can get to an appropriate strategic direction for hiring, because I think we need one. I think we need to have one.
Your strategic direction plan is more around the issue of diversity?
No, not just that. I mean, it's about, you know, what kind of education are we looking for from our teachers, both formal education and, you know, continuing education? What kinds of, what are the various competencies do we want to see before our students in terms of what the teachers have coming out of school or that they acquire after, once they're on the job? Like I said, diversity is certainly part of it. Geographic diversity would be great, too. I mean, I think there's a lot of things to talk about, things that we've already talked about, that we quite, that we've taught. In my impression, we've talked around a lot of it, but we haven't really gotten to the meat of it.
Would that not be part of the job description, or is there something beyond that that?
Yeah, there's more, what do we, what do we, what are we looking for? What do we want? What do you, who do we want in front of our students? The job description, I think, the work that we've done, especially starting with Randy way back, I think, has been really good. I think we've really come a long way in terms of the job descriptions. The job description, in my opinion, is the, a product, not the idea. So that is clear, hopefully.
Are you talking strategic direction beyond what the board has already set for us? Or are you thinking about going back and setting a strategic direction, just so we're clear?
Sure, sure.
Because there's five strategic directions.
Yes. Right. And I, you know, and I think that when we set the strategic direction, I don't think that we really got to that, what education we're looking for, who do we want in front of our students, what kind of continuing education, what kind of professional development we want. I don't, in my opinion, I don't think we got to that.
And I don't know that we necessarily, as a board, would have.
Yeah.
That would have been, we set this strategic direction, and then it becomes an administration.
So I'm trying to understand, is this the direction of the board that I would go back with the team and develop a strategic direction around? I'm a little unclear yet, and I'm looking out at their faces, and they seem, and what we're really, if I'm, I'm going to pull it back to the strategic direction around excellence in education for students. Because that's really what we're saying, and that's really what we are trying to do with this handbook language change, is really make sure and ensure that what we do and who we put in front of the children that we serve each and every day is indeed the very best. And when I look out and look at the fact that I might have a third-year teacher who is highly qualified and perhaps even has some training that no one else has, and when they have to come to me to justify that that is the most qualified candidate, I think about the fact that the time spent when, in fact, it was very apparent this is the most qualified candidate, you know, part of the reason things aren't posted in a timely fashion is because of the time it takes to vet out and identify who the most senior five are, then to interview those people. Sometimes they don't come, sometimes they, they, then you have to go to and find the next one. And so the process has become overly cumbersome. You know, even our internal candidates, many, when I look out, I think of the newer teachers and the young teachers who don't even see that they have opportunity. And we are losing younger teachers. I see a fair number of those to neighboring districts and one on the agenda tonight. So I look at that and say, how do we balance? And is it a philosophy? You know, we have the piece around, around continuous improvement, excellence. And when you look at the research, the research says to provide mirrors for children. There's a great article today in the Madison paper that talks, this young teacher said she came through the school system there and said, "I never had a teacher who looked like me." You know, these are the kinds of things that we bat around. And can you identify each criteria and qualification? Or do you look at each individual position and say, what does a teacher who's at the East Fine Arts Institute look like versus a teacher who's at Fort Howard? You know, and they look very different. So I'm, that's why I'm unclear as to what the direction is.
Well, and, you know, I'm speaking for myself. And as I said, a month is not enough time in any stretch of the imagination to accomplish even what I'm talking about. However, when I, when I think about this and I think about, and I've had some time to think about it, I think that is a missing piece for me. That, that it's one thing to say we want continuous improvement and excellence, but what does that actually mean? What does that mean in terms of what we, what we want in terms of our hiring, what kinds of teachers we want, and how we develop the teachers that we currently have so that they can not only succeed in the jobs they want, but succeed in the jobs like Mr. Reeser had said, his dream job, to be an eighth-grade algebra teacher? So it, I, this is, this is the time to talk about it because this has come up. And I do understand the administration's desire to change the handbook language to effectuate to a immediate need. I totally get that. I'm still feeling like we have a missing piece. And I think we're getting those pieces in place. But as I said, I'm speaking for myself in what I think needs to happen.
I think that all warrants further discussion, but as I said in my initial comments, we talked about teachers before, and I was relatively comfortable with that. And the other groups that were brought up tonight that I didn't ask questions about or think about, and both their conversations or their comments here, all going back to teachers, we do have several employees who are not teachers, and they need to be taken into account, especially since in the handbook, it looks like everybody's going to be getting one paragraph or two. So that's, I'm looking for those concerns and questions to be addressed. And like I said, they may already have been, they may already have been. They might have been, might not have been, but I think a month or so to address that behooves us.
Do you? I guess I'm looking at you, wondering if you know what questions, what he wants addressed in terms of specific concern that you have tonight based on what you heard.
Well, somebody took notes. I'm sure they were inside, too, listening to all the concerns they've raised this evening. We have two things in writing. We need to, in my mind, address them.
Yeah, I think I would agree with Chris. I think in our work session, I think the conversation was primarily around our teaching staff. And I think we perhaps didn't address those, and I'm sure they can be addressed. So I think I would agree with Chris. And as staff looked at this for us for next month, there's a couple of things that came up that maybe I wasn't clear of and aware of. Dan Gage had mentioned teachers having a lack of opportunity to move. And I guess I would like to know a little bit more of, does this change really affect? Because I know teachers move from school to school all the time, maybe not all the time, but every year. So I would like to know specifically how this would affect staff's ability to transfer from one school to another. And someone else had mentioned, I think it was Karen, why the Labor Management Committee is no longer meeting. And I guess I would, if it isn't, I guess I would like to know why it's not meeting.
There was, we would put out a request for agenda items, and Sandy, would you get them?
No.
Never. So that's, we just waited. So now maybe we can get some agenda items.
Okay. Well, that's a good point. If people aren't suggesting things for the committee, it's pretty hard for the committee to meet if there's nothing to meet about. I mean, if some of our staff groups want to discuss things, I think it's incumbent on them to come forward with their questions and their items.
That's not the discussion. Hey, there's a motion on table.
Table.
Is there more?
I just have a couple of comments if I may. First, Jean, how much conversation took place about these changes with the different groups?
We've been messaging this with the ASME units for the last couple of months that we've met. The details didn't go to them, to the units until the board had a chance at their meeting to look at it first. But the ideas of going with a simultaneous posting internally and externally was talked about over the last several meetings in the fall.
And I do get, I appreciate my, your concern about the extension of just a month at this point, because I think the biggest issue is getting access to the new applicants. And regardless of people moving internally, we're going to need, because of retirement and people, you know, moving from the district, we're going to need.
Right.
A pool of new applicants as well.
I'm just trying to figure out process here. So if this, if this gets tabled today, then at our work session in January, this would be brought, I mean, is this what you're envisioning? This would be brought forward as an agenda item? And then we have more of a chance to talk about our concerns, or do you want your, the questions ahead of time from board members? Would that, would that help you? And I guess my other question is, are you able to answer any of the concerns that were expressed today, today? And then, and then we, then those will get answered today, and we could, we would have fewer to talk about on the next.
I appreciate that particular comment. However, I think that's pointing a lot on administration right now. I'd rather than have a chance to go back and look at the comments and concerns that were raised and address them in systematic form. I don't know why, I mean, I have a division that's been discussed in the work session. And next, I don't know whether, I gave them the or, that's their call. As far as I'm concerned, they can figure it out. They can even piecemeal teachers out if need be. But in any event, we have a regular board meeting, I believe, at least a week earlier, next month, so.
What are the dates of the regular board?
I have a mind, Mike.
January 12th.
January 12th.
Well, the work session.
Oh, that's late.
And then the following is, but then there's only the.
There's a board meeting.
So there's only a week between the two, yeah. Were you going to say something?
No, I think that's satisfactory. I mean, to email Jean some of the, if there's any questions that you want, you know, for example, in a question and answer forum, if you send me the questions, I'll work with our team to respond to those questions for the work session, or you'll get that ahead of time. And then, I'm just wondering if there's any change in the language that you're questioning? Is there anything in the policy recommendation that you feel isn't clear or is fundamentally not in keeping with what the board wishes would be? Right now.
Well, you know, that's what I'm wondering, because there have been a lot of issues raised about, well, how long it takes to post, but that's not related to this. That's, that's another issue. That's not related to the policy. Sometimes it takes longer to post because a job gets vacated and the supervisor is looking to see, do they really need this position? Do they need it full-time? Do they need it part-time? And so when they know what they need, then we can post it. So, you know, the recommendation is what was prepared in writing. So is there anything fundamentally, you know, philosophically, that, you know, the board disagrees with? Because we can answer the questions. Some of them are separate issues, I see, and some of them are basically, I don't agree with the way the language is written because it doesn't honor the most senior person. So that's what I want to know. Otherwise, I would bring back the same language if I don't know what the fundamental belief is.
I think what we're asking, I'm asking, Mrs. Marshall, is that you take in the concerns that were raised and questions. We can have discussion about that, and you have a chance to respond how those have been addressed today. If by chance you see in there where you need to make a change or another recommendation with the language you brought forward, that's, okay. I mean, now, obviously, in between time, you've asked us to email the questions, and we could certainly do that relative to language, too.
I guess, I guess I would agree, Jean, that if you could respond to some of the questions raised, I guess I was a little bit surprised that some of our employees weren't here at the work session. So no one showed up at the work session, so you're thinking, well, there might be some concerns, but there's not any overriding concerns. Obviously, staff felt concerned enough to show up here tonight, and I appreciate your attendance, and we always want staff at our meetings. But there have been some issues raised, so I think we would just like the answers to those, and then I, I think, I think we can make a decision in January. At least, I think so.
Ready to call a question? All right. Sandy?
Lecker?
Hi.
Wagner?
Hi.
Saloni?
Hi.
Jeffrey?
Todd?
Warren?
Hi.
Franz?
Hi.
Carrot six zero. So that automatically indicates the previous month, and we have to do something with that. No, this table's that motion.
You have a table.
That's the table.
All right. So then we will return to our regular agenda order, which, our next item is the superintendent's update.
Thank you. Brenda, back to the calendar, just to remind us, we are quickly approaching December 24th, and that will be when our winter recess starts, just like the Senate, I think, in Congress, they go on recess. And we'll be out from December 24th through January 4th for winter recess. And we want to just remind people that.
We're more productive than the Senate is, though, Michelle.
We are more productive than the Senate. We don't like to gridlock.
We get paid a whole lot less, too.
That's right.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I'm on a riff now.
Nice analogy. I'm sorry, but I like the word recess, and I heard it on television just recently. We resume classes on January 5th, and so it'll be a new year, 2015. And then January 12th, as we just noted, is our Teaching and Learning Work Session meeting, beginning at 5:30 here in the board room. And we also have immediately following is our organizational support meeting with the regular board meeting already on January 19th. And then I'm assuming, Mike, you'll speak a little to the Wisconsin Association of School Board Convention coming up on January 21st through the 23rd that will be attending as well. So looking forward to a busy month in January already, but we hope to make it safe and well through the holidays first. So that's the calendar. And I do have some discussion items, and I'm going to invite Alan Wagner up to the table. There's been some question and concerns around what's happening with the insurance as it relates to the Prell fire. So we thought it would be important to just give folks an update as to what's been happening, the flow of money, there's been some questions around that, and we want to be transparent, so.
All right. Excuse me, Alan. Who expressed the questions?
Who expressed questions?
Staff, wondering, and we've had some. Staff, wondering, and we've had some community wondering, just how that's being taken care of.
Again, our district has insurance through the local government property insurance fund through the state of Wisconsin, which we have had for quite a few years with the property. With the fire in August, Paul Davis National was hired to do the restoration and cleanup for Preble High School. As far as the insurance is concerned, we had a, we had a deductible of $25,000. So the district's only liability to that building is a $25,000 deductible to the insurance company. The insurance company, as far as payment to Paul Davis National, the insurance company, the amounts the insurance company is giving to Paul Davis National are coming through the district. And this is the way the insurance company had asked me to do that. So we get checks on a regular basis, made out to the Green Bay schools from our insurance company, and as we deposit those checks, those monies are directly deposited then into Paul Davis National bank account. So right now, as those checks come, we are wiring those dollars. And at this point, we have received roughly $2,225,000, the district, that we have then forwarded to Paul Davis National. And based on the bills from Paul Davis National, are, the cost of the, the work that they have done for the district is roughly $7.2 million. So we're at the point where the insurance company, again, still owes Paul Davis National, you know, roughly $5 million, payments that have to still be coming. And some of those checks are coming in, in quantity of $500,000, so we're seeing more dollars coming through the district and then being wired, wired to, to Paul Davis National. We are working with our insurance company right now, as far as, as the insurance company is paying back for Paul Davis, we are looking at all the equipment that the district lost in the, in the fire. And so we, you know, set up a special account number for that, according to what the insurance company has asked, and coded all of the replacements for a lot of it, is the FiET equipment, a lot of replacements at the district that Preble High School has, you know, put on purchase orders, the invoices are coming through here. Right now, we're, we're looking at, looking at about $940,000.
In addition to the $7.2 million?
No, $940,000 is for the personal property that we lost, the FiET equipment.
Right.
The supplies that are in the teachers' classrooms, all of those still covered by insurance.
Yeah.
But we have replaced that, and then we have sent those invoices to the insurance company, as to this is the amount of money we have spent to replace the equipment, the supplies that were ruined in the fire.
So, sorry, Alan, I don't understand, seven.
Well, for the personal property loss, our insurance covers the loss of our, our property in the fire. And so we are sending invoices to the insurance company, who is going to reimburse us for the cost of those items.
That's outside.
That's, right, that's outside the seven.
Outside of Paul Davis.
Yeah, okay, right. Thank you, okay.
For the, this point, it's down to Paul Davis.
So now we're up to eight?
So we are working with them, they are looking through every one of our invoices, and so you can imagine it, it does take a little bit of time spent, they ask us a lot of questions. Also included in those expenditures are the time sheets for, we had teaching staff who needed to come into the building and work with Paul Davis to, you know, look at their classrooms, make a determination of what could be kept, what had to be thrown away. And so Paul Davis took an inventory of what was thrown away, I sent them the time sheets for the, the teachers' time that they came in to, to work with Paul Davis in each of their classrooms, and those have already been sent to the insurance as well. On the last item, that, the first day we had a meeting at Preble High School, our insurance company also asked that we look, look to file time sheets, look at time sheets that we should have lost time that the district lost, because people like Mike Stengel, people like Natasha Raul, time that was spent dealing with the fire versus dealing with, you know, their current positions. And that's the, the third part, that we are just starting to send those, those time sheets. I, as, as the insurance company instructed us on the first day to have everyone, you know, salary people who worked on the, you know, had to be there at Preble to work on the, the fire damage, and, so we will be also sending in a claim for lost time of our employees who, instead of doing their regular jobs, were having to also work at the, at Preble High School to deal with the damage there. We've had, and again, we are not, we are not responsible to pay any of the contractors, other than we're funneling the money through the state to Paul Davis. Paul Davis has the responsibility of paying all the subcontractors, all the temp agencies, every, anybody that they have subcontracted, that is, goes all through Paul Davis National. We are not involved in any way with that, other than taking the dollars from the state when they send us checks to give them, you know, to wire the money to Paul Davis to, again, at a time in, in the future, make, you know, make them whole. And again, they are the responsibility, it's not our responsibility, as far as the vendors that they hired, we're totally separated from that. We've had a, a few phone calls regarding the payments to some of the temp agencies, had discussions with, with Neil, if you remember Neil, who's, you know, there every day, doing the meetings. And, and again, when we started, when they started the payments to the subcontractors, it was at that point that the cleaning staff were not going to be part of the prevailing wage. And as the construction has gone along, there was a, another ruling, and at this point right now, they are trying to now catch up to, they have to now reimburse some of the temp agencies additional dollars, because some of those cleaning people, when they cleaned the room, and then the next people coming in painted the room, the cleaning people are part of that painting, not, and so they, they are able to receive a higher pay rate for that work. And right now, Neil has talked to me, and they are in the process of calculating that additional amount that they will now have to pay through the temp agencies.
Are you done?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Mike.
Couple of questions, Alan. First of all, is Paul Davis expressing concern to us that the payments are coming slowly?
Actually.
Or slower than they would like?
Ask me the question again, sorry.
Has Paul Davis expressed a concern to us about why the payments are coming in maybe more slowly than they would like?
Well, I think they're, they're concerned, but I think they understand that, you know, this, the dollars are not coming from the district, so.
Right.
You know, they're not, it's, it's not the district that is doing the funding. I, I think, again, it's only my, my, you know, that, a company that big is, probably has, reserves to fall back on when these things happen, because I'm sure when they did the, the other three school districts in Wisconsin had the same, you know, had the same, same issues with getting the money. And again, the money, the amounts have gotten larger, and I think it will be, you know.
Would you explain to me why there are all these individual payments? Is it, do they look at, say, one payment for cleaning all the auditorium seats, or, I mean, the fieldhouse, I assume that is the largest single, that was the work they had to do. So how, how are the different checks being broken up? Is it different types of work?
And all of that is Paul Davis, so we're, you know, I have three different bills from Paul Davis, just what is their actual cost of what they're doing at the building?
Yeah.
All of the replacement of the equipment, you know, that is, was no longer usable, again, is, is all being purchased through our purchasing department to replace those dollars. And then, and then the insurance company will reimburse us what the final dollar amount is for the property that we had to replace. Paul Davis themselves cleaned the entire building, and also, you know, and also did work on the fieldhouse.
Is Paul Davis giving invoices to us, and we send them to the insurance company, or do they go directly?
The insurance, the insurance company is evaluating all of Paul Davis's invoices.
Okay, but Paul Davis sends them directly to the insurance company, or through us?
They send them to the insurance company. I just happened to get a copy of the, and, and that invoice has got every contractor, every person that they paid, it's not something you want to print too often, but they are, you know, very detailed. And, and the insurance company, as they will look at what I am sending them now for the equipment that we're replacing, it's up to the, you know, the insurance adjuster is, you know, Camacho, Jim Camacho, I think was his name, is responsible for them, they will go through all of those bills to make a determination that what they're paying Paul Davis is what they actually should be paying. You know, they will review all the invoices, like any insurance company does for a car accident you have, they will come and look and, and review the documents to, they won't try to pay us any more than they, you know, than they need to, so.
Chris?
I have three questions. One sort of technical question, I believe, you, you get the money in check form from the state?
Correct.
And then you wire it?
I wire it once the check passes, passes through.
Here's the technical question. Oh, you wire it once the check?
Yeah, I do not wire the money until the check clears into our account. They don't get the money any sooner than I get the money.
Okay, that's wondering, because I've asked the checks before.
I know, the question is why the state doesn't wire me the money, and I wire, you know, I could wire it, it would be a lot similar.
How, how long does it usually take to clear?
Within one day.
Okay, that's the bit. Second question, you talked about salaried employees, and, I mean, I, we don't know, do we know in fact that we'll be getting money back on these time sheets for salaried?
We do not.
No, we don't know that at this point.
Other than the insurance company, Mr. Camacho, first day who were there, said, do time sheets for all the salaried employees for lost time. Now, that part is just started, we have the spreadsheet together, we'll be sending it sometime this week to them, and again, we'll.
Okay, now, I was about to say, may not be able to address this one time, but if I, if I'm salaried and I work there, and I, I can't do my, what I'd normally be doing because I'm working fire issues.
Okay.
And then I work another three hours every day because of that, are they, are you saying reimbursement for that three hours, or, or the?
The reimbursement is really for the time spent outside the normal hours to, well, truly not the normal hours, because the salaried person has no normal hours, you get paid what you get paid, whether you were 10 hours or 24 hours, but it is what they have asked us to do, and that is what I'm going to do, and we will see whether it, any dollars comes from, through that. And I'll be talking to them this week, because I do have all the time sheets put together.
Okay, so, again, with that, I personally don't have a problem if people are salaried and they have been a lot of extra hours because of this, to get some sort of compensation for that. Last question I have right now is, in terms of reimbursement from the state, have we gotten any reimbursement from the district from the state yet, for, or say, the bleachers at the, at the gym?
We have, for the personal property, and again, the bleachers have gone through, have gone through Paul Davis.
Is that a fair answer, Michael?
Because they replaced it.
All of that was part of, replaced, they brought, they bought the new bleachers, so it all is part of that $7.2 million. So in that $7.2 million, you have the bleachers, you have the renovation of the, you know, the replacement of the entire fieldhouse, so that's.
Okay, I, I'll change my question a little bit then. Have, has the district gotten any money back for, on this, towards this $940,000?
We are, we are currently finishing off, they send us questions, we send back the answers, they send us questions, we look for the P. Kurt receipt, we send that back, you know. So we are, we're pretty much done with that piece of it.
Thank you.
And at this point in time, I, we have not had any negative, you know, communication with them that we would not be, you know, paid for the full amounts of those items. Like anything else, they're checking, they're doing their due diligence, they hired a specific person just for, you know, the Preble group, you know, for the Preble project.
Any idea how long this whole process will take until all the bills are finally paid?
Well, I hope it will be within, by, by spring, I would think that we're gonna be taken care of.
Okay.
Because I certainly would like it to be all done in the same fiscal year, certainly always helps, too.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Alan.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, that was good.
And I think it's a good time to, to mention how well the entire Preble staff reacted to the tremendous inconveniences caused, the teachers and the administrators and, and the students. I think everyone said, you know, rather than, than moaning about what happened, they said, all right, it happened to us, let's, let's deal with it. So I want to give credit to the entire Preble team for the way that they handled this disaster.
And the administrators downtown.
Yes, yeah, well, yes. Mike Stengel and everyone involved.
Laurie Blakely.
Laurie Blakely, yeah.
Tweet and Twitter pictures, also. No, that kept the public informed, but it also kept staff informed, because people wondered how bad it was, and students, and everyone could see what was going on, and sometimes that's real helpful.
Yep. All right, next we have the, to schedule Dr. Langfeld's performance review meeting, and we are hoping to schedule it for Monday, January 26th.
We're eating on only available Mondays, right? Is that right?
Well, we always do.
We can't get only available Mondays in our calendar.
Well, we're skipping the 5th, because that's our first day back from vacation, so you'll have the 5th off.
And what time are you thinking?
That, that can be flexible, depending on what people do.
I'm, I'm good.
The last Monday is always our heest advice.
Yeah, and you're done?
Well, we start, it's, it's a night.
Okay. All right. And there's, is there any other day?
Um, I, you know, I can see if that can be rescheduled, but I.
No, I mean, any other day of the week you personally can, can meet, or no? I know sometimes you have.
Yes, there are other nights.
You have other nights. So it would be nice to have all of us there, last time we did it.
Yes, Tuesday evening.
Tuesday, which Tuesday?
Any Tuesday evening, I'm done as of 6:15, I could be here by 6:30.
Does Tuesday work for people?
The 27th?
Well, I'm looking, it's probably the 20th, is that too late for you?
That's the convention. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be, I could be in Milwaukee on Tuesday.
All right, mine doesn't stretch on the next day. All right, so then that would be the 27th.
I, I've been asked by DPI to review scholarship applications for the Hurt Cole Scholarship, and that's a two-day commitment, that's Tuesday and Wednesday, so I'll be in, two days.
Oh, you're gonna be gone, okay.
What about the 13th?
That's one of the days, well, now, I knew.
What about the 13th?
No.
That's out.
Go back to the 26th, and I'll try to, everybody else.
Can we make it on the 26th? Is everybody else going on the 26th?
And I will adjust.
Okay.
If that works for everyone.
Adjust in a way that you'll be here?
I will be here.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should have everybody for the review.
I just wanted to know where the adjustment was going.
How early could we make it? Because then maybe I could have my meeting later.
Sure, push it later.
Does Andrew have problems before 5:00? What about you, Celeste, you have a problem before 5:00?
These days, my schedule is even more flexible, because I'm working more, so, paradox.
I was gonna say, the statement did not make any sense.
Well, not really.
Well, all right.
But I could meet as early as.
4 o'clock?
I, I can't do it before 5:15.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Oh, it's up on it earlier.
Well, earlier than, I recommend it on Tuesday.
Originally, she said 6:30, so 5:15. Originally, she said 6:30, so 5:15?
5:15?
Can you do that, Chris? 5:15 on Monday, 26th.
What, what day are we back on?
Okay, we are on Monday, January 26th, 5:15.
2015.
2015.
We can be here.
Not 2115.
Are you going to be getting us?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Sandy, can you add, my phone is dead, can you email that out? Thank you, goodbye.
26.
My phone is, stupid phone.
It's a problem.
I know. Probably because I should charge it.
Okay.
Well, I was going to suggest that, but I don't want to get.
That's what I tell my kids all the time.
It is an advantage to pay.
All right, and then we'll go back to Dr. Langefeld for her last item.
Yes, I have some success stories that I want to share. There's a new competition in the Fox Valley and it's a culinary throwdown. I don't know if you, I love it, isn't that good? So our own Preble High School went out, participated in the throwdown, came back with the silver and they'll be catering for us this weekend for a, what a party here, so looking forward to that as well. So I think the Fox Valley Technical College hosted and I think it was a really great experience for our students. And I think more and more of these, these competitions we see in the Food Network and I'm sure it was, it was well received and the kids were really excited about it. I did want to let people know, and I, I don't know if you realized, when it came in tonight, the East High School Chamber Choir was performing for us and they actually came and performed during lunchtime for us today as part of the Kim Powell's and my gift to expand a cabinet. But they will be on Good Day Wisconsin tomorrow morning from 7 to 9, so if you have a chance to catch that and maybe if anyone hears it out in TV land, they'll, they'll pick them up. They, they just have beautiful voices and their, their holiday set certainly puts us in the spirit and kind of relaxed us. I mean, I think sometimes we get really caught up in all the excitement of, of the season, you know, stress, okay, let's just call it stress. So it really was a nice, a nice, beautiful, beautiful voices. And I think Laurie Blakesley came back and said, the one young lady could shatter glass. Her voice is so high and so clear. Anyway, it's beautiful. My last one has to do with a young man who sits as our ICSC president and he is here at the table tonight and I want to extend congratulations to Lokeen Tang who is heading off to Princeton, is that accurate? On a full ride. I finished, not that conclusive, lots to celebrate out and about in the buildings as well.
We have no legal update this month and I just wanted to say if there's anything.
Pardon?
I, you said one minute, so.
We've allowed a minute to say this.
Oh, so I'm taking, I'm taking my.
Okay, add it, all right.
I was just going to say if there's ever any kind of legal questions that you have, Melissa, she can add them to a list for legal updates in the future. All right, then we have, next is our intercity student council report. I'll turn that over to Lokeen.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda for our intercity student council report is high school news. For East High School, Preble and East High School students intro to health, introduction to health, students visited UW-Milwaukee for a health careers tour. They explored the health careers that they could take or under, under program at UW-Milwaukee. And students Fabian, Salinas, Michael, Witchlets, Madeline Sweeney, Ariel, Mas, this was named to the cross-country team, all-era cross-country team. East Basketball defeated Preble 50-49 last week as well. And at Preble High School, Morgan Gendrea was named honorable mention to the all-areas girls' cross-country team. Daniel Lazering was named cross-country runner of the year for the second time. And then like, like the superintendent said, the Preble Culinary Students took silver at the high school culinary competition at Fox Valley Technical. Izzy Samuels, Isabel Samuels was named to the, one of the 10 all-U.S.A. Green Bay area girls' basketball players to watch. Preble High School Dance Team took fourth at the Louis Chou Holiday Invite as well. And at Southwest High School, Evan Prog and Maria, Maria Malko were named Scholars of the Week. Natasha Hyman was also named one of the 10 all-U.S.A. Green Bay girls' area basketball players to watch. I understand she's attending Marquette this fall for basketball. And Adam Meyer was named honorable mention to Boys Country, Cross Country Team. And for West High School, the Chamber Choir was on Good Day Wisconsin the other day for the Sounds of the Seasons.
I didn't know.
And Kristi Lamez and Kazwa Yang were named Scholars of the Week. And for upcoming events, just winter recess and finals, a month from now.
When is Silent Night?
Oh, I believe it is the first game for West after the finals. Okay.
And did I read in the paper that West beat Notre Dame? Was that?
I hope so.
Boys basketball, boys basketball.
Did you say you hope so?
He said I hope so.
Yeah, the boys' basketball team is doing very well. The coach is young and he's very committed.
That's nice.
Good to hear.
And that concludes the ICSC report.
All right, thank you, Lokeen. Next we have our legislative liaison report and I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thanks, Brenda. Update on state legislative issues, there's a number of things percolating in the Capitol in advance of the legislature reconvening in early January. There was some extensive coverage in the Wisconsin State Journal, I'll, I'll quote from, partially from their story, and it appears that key Republican legislators are backing away from the talk about we need to repeal the Common Core. And this is a comment from Robin Voss, who's Assembly Speaker, saying, we're not necessarily going to repeal Common Core because they are standards adopted by DPI. If school districts like the standards, they can keep them, but I think we want to make sure that no one feels compelled. Whoever spokesman for the governor said that the governor still wants an accountability bill that includes a repeal of the Common Core. And the bottom line is he wants to make sure that no school district in the state is required to use the Common Core standards. Tom McCarthy, who's a spokesman for DPI, said DPI has not seen any legislation that Republican lawmakers are working on, but that DPI remains supportive of keeping the standards and that final decisions about standards, curriculum, textbooks must continue to, excuse me, to rest with local school boards. And I think that's one thing we've always talked about here. And when the, the idea of repealing Common Core first came up, some other legislators said, well, there's nothing to repeal because it's not a law that the legislature passed. It was a DPI directive, so the legislature really has no hand in that. And remember Luther Olson saying at the time, he said, I think 95% of the school districts can tell the state, forget it, they're going to go ahead and do what they're doing. And obviously, we and many, many other school districts are well into implementing Common Core. So I, I know we have no intention of backing away and I think most school districts do not, although there are a few that have said that they will not adopt the Common Core, although the smarter balanced assessment is aligned to the Common Core. So that, if you abandon the Common Core, what do you, what do you go with? Celeste?
Well, I, that does, that just isn't as clear as mud, because then where is a state standard? If the school district can say, well, we're not going to adopt this set of standards, whatever you call them, whatever they are.
Right.
Then what? Then how there, how are there any state standards? I don't know how, where is that?
That is a good question. I don't know if there's an answer to that.
If indeed I heard you correctly, though, it sounds like most of the districts have implemented or in the process there. So I, I would think to your question, the others are going to have to follow suit. Very later, there will be odd man out.
It's, it's become a political topic around the country.
Around the country, yeah.
I mean, it's not, it's not an educational issue, it's a political issue.
It, it was educational when it was first agreed to by.
Oh, it was?
It was of both sides and then it's become.
It was turned into a political issue. It is, it should be an educational issue and some have turned it into a political issue. Did you have a comment, Michelle?
Yeah, it just, as long as the, and, and this is getting tricky too, as you start to look at that accountability bill and the discussion around that. The assessment currently that we're talking about that Stephen has presented on Badger 5 through 8, 4 through 8, 3 through 8, 3 through 8. Badger 3 through 8 is the assessment aligned to the Common Core.
Right.
Now, if the state will now, there's discussion in the accountability bill that you don't have to do the state assessment. You can't not do and implement Common Core if you're going to do well on the state assessment. You have to have the standards embedded in your curriculum or students won't be able to do them. So it just, it gets tricky when you have one hand in hand with the other, how do you separate them unless we become a state with no standards and choose your own assessment? And that's, that's up for discussion right now.
And the Common Core and the accountability bill are kind of all tied together. Senator Paul Pharaoh, who would have been shepherding a Senate version of the accountability bill that we've talked about in the past, he said his bill probably would allow public and private voucher schools to choose from more than one test. He said that could be accurately compared. Robin Voss said he's not pushing for school districts to use different tests, but he's open to that possibility as long as the tests are nationally recognized. The problem, at the, at the WSB Legislative Advocacy Conference in November, Bradley Carl was there and he is head of the Value Added Institute at UW-Madison and he is a nationally recognized expert on value-added testing. And he said there is no way that if schools use different tests, that they could be compared.
Right.
So if the voucher schools say, we want a different test than the public schools and they say, well, look, we did better than you, there's no way, that's not an accurate comparison. He says you can't accurately compare different tests.
Of course not.
Well, that's what.
You, you assume they want to accurately compare.
Yeah.
Which I think is a bad assumption.
Right.
You know. Now, I, as, as to the issue of Common Core being continued with by choice or not, I think we have to keep in mind and not put our guard down, indeed we've got Common Core is that our governor is running for president and it is a very conservative issue to get rid of Common Core. So if he is right for presidency, we all understand him to be, I don't see him dropping him.
But I think, you know, and then it, this actually could be a constitutional issue because the state student and public, public instruction is a constitutional office and if the, let's say the governor's office tried to take authority away from another constitutional officer, there could be a court fight over that. That is something that may happen.
But it may be something that won't happen because that would not be a positive thing for our state.
Well, it certainly wouldn't be. The, and then another thing involving with different tests, and this is also in the Wisconsin State Journal article, saying that multiple tests could jeopardize the state's waiver for requirements under No Child Left Behind and federal funding. And that's because the U.S. Education Department requires Wisconsin students to take an annual test linked to the state's adopted standards, which are currently Common Core for math. So that could jeopardize our waiver if you use different standards or different testing standards. Is that clear?
The two things, what is Allison, what do you mind, it's getting more curious and more curiouser.
Curiouser and curiouser.
Well, and the DPI says, says this, allowing school districts to have different standards and offer different tests could cause confusion for families and educators about expectations for schools and call the integrity of the state's accountability system questions. John Johnson said, quote, "I don't know how transparent that is anymore with multiple tests." Now, the, Paul Pharaoh's version of the accountability bill calls for creating a school accountability board. And there's, if you look at it, there's a whole host of people from different areas, including a lot of voucher representatives on that board, that would, that would, that board would periodically review the formula used in the report cards as well as determine sanctions. He said his bill would include interim sanctions that would be put into law until the board created new ones. And the board would have discretion to apply appropriate sanctions for each district. Robin Voss's position, I think the Assembly would, will be a lot tougher than the Senate version. Bob Voss said this, quote, "Our position is pretty aggressive in saying we want sanctions to be built in." Accountability, to me, means if you get an A, a B, a C, a D, or an F, you know exactly what happens with a D. You know exactly what happens with an F. For example, he said sanctions for D-rated schools should include things like more teacher training rather than punitive measure, measures. F-rated schools, whether public charter or private voucher, would face sanctions after multiple years, such as teacher or leadership repla, excuse me, replacement, or in a case of voucher schools, remove or removal from the program. And that, Senator Pharaoh has said that the accountability bill will, would be their first priority when this, when the Senate and the legislature come back into session in January. So, and I know that that is something that WSB and WASDA, which is school administrators, and SAA, which is School Administrators Alliance, are monitoring very closely and will be certainly involved in, in that process as those bills come out. One other interesting related is that the, the Senate is doing what the Assembly did last year. There is, both of the houses have always had a, an education committee. The Senate Majority Leader announced that he has created a formation of a new committee on education reform and government operations chaired by Senator Pharaoh. And as the Assembly did, this basically is a way, I think, of sending the accountability bill to this committee rather than Luther Olson's Senate Committee, because Luther Olson has been very hesitant to adopt bills dealing with accountability standards. And they could just simply send the accountability legislation to Paul Pharaoh's committee rather than Luther Olson's committee and avoid dealing with Luther Olson. Because that's what the Assembly did last time. They didn't like Steve Castell, who was Chair of the Assembly Education Committee, so they created a similar committee in the Assembly and then routed things through that committee. And one more thing, looking at the next month, we will have, staff for the last week or so has copies of the WSB resolutions that will go to the Assembly at the convention. And they will come to our January 19th meeting, set it to table with us, will go through the resolutions and they will talk to us about the impact of those resolutions on our school district and whether Chris is our delegate and then me, I also get a vote as a WSB officer, how we should vote. And I know in the past, this has been, I think, very helpful, because a lot of times resolutions have unintended consequences. I mean, we don't realize how it would impact us, so staff will come to our January 19th board meeting. Chris, I think you already got, as our delegate, got a packet. I have a packet and the district got a packet. And if anyone is interested in looking at it ahead of time, they're on the WSB website. So you can look at those if you're interested in, and I think Sandy will be loading those onto the, into Neptune for the board meeting, but if you want to look at them ahead of time, they're on the WSB website. So anybody have any questions for me? All right, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mike. I think we've covered quite a few of the district events, but if anybody has anything else you want to bring up, heading into the holidays, probably not, not too much going on in the next.
Oh, well, December 19th, I'm no, I can't recall if you mentioned it, December 19th, West High School is having a one-night, one-act play with spaghetti beforehand.
No, it's not, it's not.
Sorry.
It's not like a guy with spaghetti.
Spaghetti is the food and what I, I, forgive me, I don't, I don't know the name of the.
Dinner show.
Dinner show.
Dinner theater, all right.
And then next we'll move on to our system reports. First we'll be teaching and learning facilitated by Katie.
Okay, and we have one action item. And I mean that the mathematics content slash course essential documents is presented be approved?
Second?
This was discussed at length at a meeting. This was discussed at length at a meeting two weeks ago. Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Carried 6-0, and that concludes our report.
All right, and next is the organizational support, and I will turn that over to Chris Wagner. We've covered-
Thank you.
I don't know, we haven't covered the first thing, go ahead.
We have a couple of action items under business. First is that Luke's, if that's the way you pronounce it, Inc. awarded a bid for window replacement at Franklin Middle School in the amount of $1,182,465 as presented be approved.
Second?
Okay, and these are window bids that were taken for Franklin Middle School. These are windows that are included as part of the referendum project. So this will be the first phase of work that will begin, followed up with the mechanical system later in the year.
Is that a summer project?
We're hoping to begin before school is out.
Have anybody had the opportunity to be at Franklin in cool or hot weather? I think you know that is what we needed.
Is that within budget, Mike, the bids?
Yeah, the, the Franklin bids are a little bit over, but the Washington bids were a little bit under.
So totally then they're, we're right about in budget?
Correct.
Okay, good.
And as the, I know we're talking about the next bid in a minute, but the significant difference in, in cost is that Washington just has that many, or I mean, sorry, Franklin just has that many more windows than Washington.
Right, we're doing the entire Franklin building on Washington, you know, the north wing is the newer wing, which we're not replacing the windows. And so there's a lot more windows at the Franklin.
At Franklin, okay. It's Chris. Go ahead.
Actually, I'm in charge now. But just, Mike has been, Mike has been working with the principals so they know, so that the least amount of disruption possible if they start the projects earlier or so. So they're, they're getting prepared and having meetings already, so.
Like we've seen with a lot of other window projects, DaVinci, for example, there's sometimes a 12 to 16-week delivery before the windows come in.
All right, Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
Second recommendation is that Luke's Incorporated awarded the bid for window replacement at Washington Middle School in the amount of $655,870 as presented be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
Moving on to human resources, we've already discussed the one item there, and that is all.
I mean, that the consent items as presented be approved?
Second?
Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.